We already have six feet of wooden fence that is on the lot line with the neighbors. And with the arborvitae's that we planted there, the deer consider a salivary. The chain link fence would help those to be healthier because the light would come through from both sides. And eventually, I would guess probably in four or five years, we'd end up with not to the extent that it is out at Key Vista Trailer Park, but it becomes a fence that you can't see through anyways, once they grow up and live there. I just thought from a maintenance standpoint and a security standpoint, the chain link is a better long-term solution. Just wanted to bring that up for discussion at night.
Okay, thank you. Andy, you want to fit that into the discussion somewhere along the line here?
Yeah, so I'll provide a little bit of background first for the application. So as Chris mentioned, this was on the agenda last month for the towing services, but they're looking to operate a towing service activity. Planning commission approved that request with condition. And so they also want to do some vehicle repair within the building or property. And the ordinance requires that, but if associated with the towing service, a, you know, the vehicle repair is not allowed unless that permission is specifically granted by the planning commission. And within the light industrial district, vehicle repairs are only permitted by special land use. So that's why we re-noticed the application. And so we're here really just to talk about the special land use. This isn't as much of a site plan review because the site plan has been approved previously. They're not going to change anything on that property. They're adding a different type of activity to the site. So there's a couple distinctions that we want to make here. It'd be zoning ordinance permits a vehicle repair facilities in the IL district, but specifically excludes body shops. So in our staff report on the bottom of page one, we include definitions for both. So if the small engine stuff, I think, is fine to do inside the building, would be considered vehicle repair. However, when we talk about, you know, streaming, paint, you know, collision-type services where they're doing body work, that's, those are things that would not be permitted in this building, as part of the operation. So in our application, or in our staff report out on page two, we walked through the rest of the standards of the zoning ordinance. So with regard to parking, there would be nine required parking spaces on the site, obviously because this is combined with another use. There'd be some indoor storage, indoor activities, and indoor storage vehicles with regard to the towing service. The ordinance builds in a lot of flexibility when it comes to parking, and that's a very deliberate decision that the planning commission made is that, you know, we don't want to, you know, have parking be the thing that kind of either holds up development because either there's too much or not enough. So the planning commission, and looking at the circumstances of the application, can reduce the amount of required spaces like that. And they can also discuss what there would be, if there would be any stop or order for service areas, talk about the total number of spaces, how many spaces they think they're going to need for the operation to make sure there's enough. But you have a lot of latitude in terms of parking. From my perspective, I did not see an issue with the parking shown on site in the discussions at the last meeting. They were intending to have, you know, dozens and dozens of cars all within place with repairs. This is a fairly low-intensity operation overall. Landscaping, this kind of gets to what Greg just mentioned. So that was also discussed as part of the towing service for the land use, and a condition of approval was included that the applicant installed a privacy fence as tall as the ordinance allows, which would be eight feet in that district. So we wrote in our staff report that that would be sufficient, and we wouldn't need to require anything more for the vehicle repair facility. I suppose you could, as a planning commission, if you're inclined, you know, adjust that requirement from the previous meeting. You know, I don't know if, you know, I don't know how much sense it makes because, you know, the point of that fence is to have a large, you know, opaque barrier between the two properties, and a chain link fence isn't going to accomplish that, at least not for a number of years, assuming that our arborvitae grow up. So that's something that you can certainly talk about. You know, I haven't given it much thought up until about five minutes ago, so it's kind of my off-the-thought response. So certainly discuss that as part of your overall deliberation moving forward. But I would be a little, you know, careful because there was some concerns from the neighbors about, you know, what's going to be going on there in the hours and things like that.
And the neighbors was here.
So the last comment that we've had here is on outdoor storage. So the outdoor storage of material is prohibited on this site, and so the site plan does not indicate any outdoor storage. You know, we suggest that they should include that as a condition of approval. So it's not something that I'm concerned about, but it's, I find it helpful to include those things as conditions. So as far as our review standard, we're only going to walk through the special land use standards tonight, because again, we're not really doing anything with the site plan. That's not proposed to have changed at all. So Mr. Chairman, do you just want to go through these one at a time, or do you want to?
Yes, and I want to bring up, obviously, the parking situation in the stalls. So I'm not sure where that fits in here. And also the landscaping that we should certainly talk about. So wherever that fits within A through F, I suppose probably both of these are going to fit under A.
Okay, so we'll start with A, which says that the proposed special land use shall be designed to be struck and operated in the same sites, so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance, the existing or intended characters of the city. That use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. So I think it's significant here that the applicant is not proposing any changes to the appearance of the building on the site. They've indicated in their submittals that these would be fairly light repair, it's not heavy-duty types of things. More intense operations, you know, collision stuff, body flames, vendors trading, all that would not be permitted, and it would have to take place elsewhere. You can certainly also require that all vehicle repair activities take place inside. And I think that's required by the ordinance anyways, but again, that's something that might be helpful to put as a condition of approval. So it's clear that some of the impacts that may otherwise adversely affect some of those neighboring properties would be limited if it's always indoors. And then with regard to parking and landscaping, I think those are both factors that are kind of built into the, you know, design, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious with the neighboring intended character of the property and things like that. So you can certainly talk about those now and make a decision on each of those if you're so inclined.
Yeah, I think it's probably appropriate to do that. One of the questions I would have, Chris, are you planning on any stalls, I guess, for open?
Yes, I mean, as in more doors or?
Well, stalls, I would assume would be the hoist, but I don't know.
Yes, we'll have some hoists in there. But you're not, are you adding any more doors to the?
No more doors, no.
No more doors, right.
I think that's what Bruce was asking. Nope, just the one on each end. I think you're looking to, for something to gauge parking though, right?
Right.
Because there are three spaces per stall. So if you're only planning on one stall, and you've got three spaces for one stall, like you're going to put in three stalls, that's what you're trying to gauge.
Yeah, yeah, gauge that with the rest of the parking.
Yeah, so.
Is that what you're saying, you're going to have cars out in the towing area?
Yep.
And that's also would be the parking area. One of the things, so that's, that was my.
Our plan is half of it's going to be towing storage, and half the building will be repair facility.
Sir, fault commissioners? Does mean, I hope it. Anything, does that make sense?
Yes. What about the landscaping part?
Landscaping, commissioners, we made a decision last month about putting a wood fence in for a specific reason of blocking off the neighbor's view. I'm in favor of keeping that, frankly. That's my choice.
Yeah, I was just up to withdraw that request. I didn't realize we were kind of done last month, and to open it back up, Bruce was around that request.
If it's an opaque fence, I don't think, on the inside, I don't think more landscaping is necessary.
The trees are already there. They're about four foot high.
They're four foot high, and the lot on our side of the fence is two foot higher than the neighbor's. So they're really, from the neighbor's point of view, they're six foot tall on that.
So, you know, they're relatively young, is what I'm saying. And the houses are right there. I mean, back there, they're right there. So my thinking would be that, to leave it in this great setting, so.
Thank you.
Can I answer that question?
Yes, so do you want to?
Let's go on then with B through F. I think we can probably go through all of them at one time.
Okay. Item B is the proposed special land use shall be generally consistent with the City of Woll master plan. Property, the master plan is on the downtown edge, people in use category is intended to function as a transition between downtown and surrounding neighborhoods. The intent is to limit uses compared to downtown and prevent an area that is more compatible for residential uses. It gives some examples due to light offices, residential uses, retail, commercial. Some of those are not desired. It doesn't really talk about industrial uses in that chapter too much. So we wrote that, well, the planning commission determined that towing service use was compatible with the master plan, or care facilities should also be evaluated in relation to this category. Because the vehicle service uses would be within a ten-closed building, you know, body shop uses are permitted, it's likely that the vehicle service facility would be comparable in intensity to the towing service use.
Let's stop for just a second. Commissioners, is there any concern here about the usage with the repair and towing?
Item C, the proposed special land use shall be adequately served by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, fire, drainage, peruses, holes, water, sewage. So the towing services, towing services that have been approved, which included an evaluation of utility connections, stormwater infrastructure, emergency cable access, presence of light vehicle repair facilities, I expect that you require the additional provision of utilities, stormwater, et cetera. So obviously, we're saying that we don't think this is going to have a significant additional impact on any of those services relative to what should likely be approved. Item D, the proposed special land use should not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services. And we're not anticipating that in this case either, there's not going to be a huge demand for additional public service at this location. Item E, the proposed special land use shall not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, et cetera, that would be detrimental to persons' property or the general welfare by excessive production of noise, traffic, confusion, or orders. So again, this is a fairly light operation, relatively speaking. Certainly, you can ask what kinds of service activities they could do to come down the site, so you can get a better idea for exactly what's proposed and what kind of work would be going on there. And then again, you can also ask if this would function for anyone from the public, or if this would be limited to only just two vehicles that get towed into the site. Last question, I guess, for Chris.
In the open to the public, we do alternators, batteries, oil leaks, it's minor repairs. It's not, very rarely do we do a full-engine overhaul or anything like that. We don't do any body work.
And then the last one is that the proposed special land use shall comply with all applicable federal state of open requirements, and copy the rules from a submitted city. That is an approval or a condition of approval that typically put on everything that comes across the desk, and it's included here as well. So we do have a recommendation of approval if you're comfortable with the standards set forth above. We do have a number of conditions that we can review if planning commission finds affirmative.
Yeah, let's go ahead with the special land use review standards, A through F. Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'll make the motion that we accept the standards A through F for the special land use review and do it all at one time. We talked about the various things there, but I'll make that motion for a second.
I'll support it.
And is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, Sue, would you give us a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Alice?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schramm?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to go on with the recommendations, David?
Okay, so the suggesting conditions, so the first four conditions are, four we put on everything, so they have to pay their fees, comply with any requirements from the engineer department and other approving agencies, comply with all applicable federal state requirements, obtain a permit and submit it to the city, continual compliance with all other applicable ordinances, comply with the requirements of the city. So we can probably take out number five, which talked about parking. So if you're comfortable with the parking arrangement as shown in likely strikes, condition five, we're shocked about the parking standards for mixed uses.
Why don't we just leave it in there?
Number six, outdoor storage shall be prohibited in all yards in accordance with twelve eighty one oh four, the zoning ordinance. Seven, landscaping, buffer, and green belts shall be continuously maintained to ensure that proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one another and from surrounding public private property. Number eight, the vehicle repair facility shall not include a body shop or conduct activities generally associated with a body shop, including but not limited to collision servicing, body frame, vendors trading, or repair, vehicle painting, or storage of vehicles in the facility shall be limited to minor vehicle repairs compatible with adjacent residential uses. Number nine, all vehicle repair shall occur within a completely enclosed building. And number 10, motor vehicles awaiting repair and repaired facilities shall not be located outdoors for more than 30 days.
Thank you, David. With that, I will make the motion that the two eleven South Washington Vehicle Repair Facility Special Land Use Application be approved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And is there a discussion? And I guess I will amend that slightly to include the 10 recommendations, as we always do. Sue, voice vote, please?
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Alice?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Schramm?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes, and thank you. Chris and Greg, both, your South Washington Vehicle Repair Facility Special Land Use is approved, and you're all set to go at this point.
Our next full Zoom is a public hearing for Joeyology, 1250 West Main Street, Special Land Use. Is there a representative from Joeyology here tonight, or on Zoom?
Can you get in here?
He's talking, but there's no, this noise, this sound isn't coming on. He's, yeah, he's talking, but there's no sound.
Hi, guys, this is Brian from Joeyology.
Hi, Brian.
Zay is, I can't hear him talking, but I can give him a call and see if he could. I don't know, he's having technical difficulties.
You there now?
He's just, he's trying to log in from, I think his computer's not set up, he's trying to log in right from his phone, so he's not?
Yeah, we just let him in, but he popped out.
Okay, I'm just trying to do it right now.
Hello?
Can I hear you?
Yep.
Hi, this is Zay from CA Design. Can I go, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, sorry about that, I don't know what happened there with my PC, so I guess I'll just go to the phone.
Hi, Zay, welcome to the planning commission meeting for tonight, April 12. Would you please just, you know, just several words at least, tell us what you'd like to do with your proposal there?
Sir, so we have an existing site there, an existing building, and we're proposing to put a roughly, let me go to my sheet here, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do this from my phone, which is kind of a pain. We're putting up it, I'm trying to, give me a second here, please. Yeah, so we basically have an existing building on a 5.06 acre site, about 13,572. We want to utilize roughly about 2,204 square feet of the front part of the building for Joeyology, for a dispensary. We're proposing for a facade alteration, parking lot repair, adding a couple of pole lights that are currently, a good size, a current amount of pole lights that are there. We're also adding some more lights to the building, 24-hour surveillance per the security plan. We have landscape, proposed landscape plan also added to the site. And that's basically, and I believe Andrew asked for some things from us last time to add, as far as topography, platform intervals, and some more information regarding utilities. We did so, and developed it, and we expanded on the security plan. I believe Andrew may have some questions in that regard. But other than that, it's basically the same scope of work as last month's meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Andy, you want to start us off?
Yes. So this is approximately a five-acre property in the C3 district. They're proposing to use only a portion of it, about 2,200 square feet, or develop use marijuana establishment, this would be a retailer. The remaining portion of the building, which is some 11,000 square feet, would be vacant for now. They're proposing to retain the existing structure and only altering some of the exterior part of the interior layout. The property is surrounded by other properties that also own C3, except for across the street. There's a property that is within EF, which is public facilities district. And that property is owned by the City of Woll. So as you know by now, marijuana retailers are permitted by special land use permit only in the C3 general business district. We tabled this application, or I should say, you tabled this application at last meeting because they were missing a number of pieces of information that would be helpful in the evaluation of the request. And they have provided virtually everything that we're looking for, so I think at this point, we have enough information here from the applicant that we can proceed with the review. With regard to the site plan, we do have a few comments on those. The building meets heightened setback requirements. The site also meets lot area width and coverage standards of the zoning ordinance. The site development requirements of section 1204, A through C, either don't apply, except landscaping, which does, which we'll talk about in a minute. We have an existing curb cut on West Main Street. As far as landscaping goes, they have proposed to exceed the landscaping requirements of the ordinance. The ordinance requires 10 trees and 30 shrubs, and they've got 12 trees and 67 shrubs, so they have exceeded your landscaping requirement, excuse me. Depending on what they decide to do to the parking lot, that could trigger additional landscaping requirements, you know, a wholesale or a significant modification of more than half the parking lot, figure, when it contains more than 20 spaces, could require the addition of, you know, more landscape items and things like that built into the parking lot. And so those, you know, could come up, depending on how much work they're planning on doing there. But overall, we don't have any serious concerns with regard to landscaping, because as I mentioned, you have exceeded your frontage standard and any other parking lot landscaping requirements we could work through with the applicant. So they have proposed 43 spaces for the site, which is quite a bit more than what they're required to do. And if you require, if you recall, for a number of other marijuana facilities, planning commission has requested some additional provision for parking. As we experienced with some of the early retailers that opened here, there was quite a demand, you know, more than what, you know, the ordinance standard proved insufficient at the time. So they have what appears to be more than enough parking for the site, given their fairly small size, I mean, 2,000 and change square feet. You're a little bit limited in your parking unit, just because it's not that big of a As far as site lighting goes, as the applicant mentioned, there are some additional lighting proposed on the buildings. Wall packs are proposed on the north, east, and west building exteriors, and there are 15-foot tall lights on the property presently. So you may request a photometric plan if you want to ensure that a light will not be cast onto adjacent properties. However, in our experience here, you haven't always required that when they're utilizing existing lighting on the site. They will be adding some on the building itself. So that's something that if you're, if there's a concern about lighting, the planning commission can certainly talk about that with the applicant and request further information if necessary. The wall sign is shown on the building, on the north elevation of basic Main Street. Additional details were not provided, but we don't have that big of a concern about that at the time, because with most applicants, they come in for a signed permit after a site plan review, and they're grounded with the specifics of their sign at that time. They have submitted a letter from the state indicating they have obtained prequalification status pursuant to the Michigan regulation and taxation of Marijuana Act, and they also included a completed application for a local operating license with this bill as well. So other questions at this point, Mr. Chairman?
I don't have any, anybody else, any commissioners? Let's go ahead with the site plan review standards then. Let's do A through F, unless there is a question by commissioner per se.
So we have, yep, so we have three more sets of standards to go through here. So we have the site plan review standards. You have the general special land use standards, which are the ones, just like the ones that we went through for the vehicle repair facility a minute ago. And then the last section of our staff report, it gets into the built use marijuana establishment standards, and that's where we get into talking about orders, isolation rate, other things like that, and some of the other, you know, prior theories and all that. So we're going to start in general, and then we'll get more specific as we go on. So to start with the site plan review standards. Do you want to do these all at once?
Ah, yes, I believe so at this point.
Okay. Standard A, the uses proposed will adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare. Structure located on the site shall be planned to take into account the property size of the property, use and enjoying the property in relationship with size of buildings to the site. The site shall be developed, so as I said, be orderly and normal and orderly development or improvement of surrounding property. So as I mentioned earlier, the site is surrounded by other properties in the C3 district, and there's one PF, a zoning property across the street, that's on the south side of Bowles Road. The site plan indicates that a certain portion of this site would not be used, as the applicant has the ball field, and they've indicated that's going to. Um, and they've indicated that that's going to continue to be used for the same purpose that it is now, although their intent is to maintain it to be used as a, as a, you know, baseball field for use by school, I think high schools is now.
Who has control of that though?
So, so they do. Uh, so it's, it's the applicant's property, and they indicated to me that they were planning on not changing anything with that southern portion of the site.
Okay, so somebody else doesn't own the building?
Correct. So far as I know, this is all one parcel, all owned by, um, owned by the applicant. Um, certainly, you know, if, if you wanted to, um, you know, memorialize some more formal arrangement, if, if the commission wants that ball field to stay there, there may be, um, you know, a, a way to work with the applicant to, to have something that's more than just a informal arrangement, maybe make that a little more, have a more permanent agreement there. If the applicant was open to doing that, I don't know. Uh, that would be one thing that you could really talk about. But I suppose also, ask that they divide the property and they think that they would be on separate parcels. You know, one could be the ball field facing with frontage on Bowes Road, the other one would be the marijuana facility, and presumably other businesses eventually facing Main Street.
And also have a training facility.
Right. So how they would do that, you know, remains to be seen, this is all just speculation here. But if there's, if there's concern about, about the use of the ball field, and how that's all going to work together, I think it would be helpful to have that conversation with the applicant now while they're in the room, and we can, and we can discuss what you're comfortable with and what the planning commission would like to see happen there.
I, I would like to know, I guess, uh, what are the future plans for the other parts of the, uh, of the building, the ball field, and the training site? Well, I, I, yeah, I'll ask that question.
I did ask him, Tom, you.
Yeah, I think, I think Brian might be able to answer that, I think he was the one that I was discussing this with previously.
I would, hi, hi everyone, this is Zay again. I would like Brian to answer that question in regards to the, uh, half of the site. Go ahead, Brian. Well, um, as with you guys, I, I didn't, uh, um, set plans for the back half of the site. I did, I do know I have a big piece of property, um, that I'll be purchasing once, uh, I get the approval. Um, I just heard that, uh, I, I think the realtor might have mentioned to me that the high school is using it, um, for practices. Um, and I said, you know, I, I wouldn't mind if they continued, I don't have plans, um, right away to do anything with that real estate. Um, I do have some other, um, uh, partners in the real estate, so I'll have to discuss it with them. But my immediate plans are just to get the, uh, the, um, dispensary up and running. And then, uh, the back part of the building, after I got this approval, I was going, I'm working on plans with Zay, um, to possibly have a grow and/or a processing back there. Um, my initial is to just get that dispensary up and running first before I do anything. But if there's anything you guys would like to see back there, um, you know, I, I listened to anything you guys wanted to see, or, um, you know, I plan to select the, the team, I think the high school is using it, I just didn't know how would be that a dispensary and, uh, high school baseball team is practicing back there. I just didn't know, I, I don't know.
I thought it was a federation baseball team, but besides the point.
What is it?
I thought it was a federation baseball team.
High school league student.
Again, I heard from the realtor, she said high school, so I, I, um, I guess she could have been, I just, that's, that's all the info I've received on that. But, um, when I found that it was a school or someone just using it, um, and they, I, I think they weren't getting charged any rent. I, I don't, I wouldn't plan on charging them anything, um, while I had it there, and I don't have any future plans for it immediately. So I wouldn't mind the school using it, um, to memorialize it on paper. I'd probably have to just talk to the partners that own the property with me to make sure they're okay with that, and, um, and we can go from there.
Brian, also, a question on the, uh, training facility there. Is there any, any update on that, or what's it used for exactly, that sort of thing?
I, I don't know exactly as of yet. Um, again, I, I, I plan on just getting intertwined with everybody there and seeing who is, uh, um, who was using that field, I figured someone would reach out to me and, um, and then just make the, the plan from there. But I don't have any plans of immediately approving the field or anything like that, just because I'm not sure of what the uses are yet, or who's there, who wants to use it. Um, I, I was planning on learning all that once I, uh, um, close on the property and getting, you know, and talking to everybody in the area.
Commissioners? I, I, I'm thinking of that, that there's a building back there that's used for...
There's a pole yard back there.
Oh, the building from my understand, no, yeah, there's the other separate building there, it's, from my understanding, it's, uh, I walked, I think I just saw pictures of the inside, but it's, uh, batting cages. So I, I was going, it's, uh, it's, I guess that the plan was to allow the, um, the team to use the field, I'd probably leave the cages there for now. Um, again, no immediate plans on, on that, just because I kind of patched that building kind of with the, with the baseball diamond. Um, because they kind of go hand in hand, but no immediate plans for that. Um, maybe down the line, if there are plans, and maybe just do, I'm not sure if I'm going to even have to keep that up there, um, if we do anything in the future, but, um, I'll definitely keep you guys definitely informed on what the plans are.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything else?
Well, I, I guess, I don't think necessarily want to try to memorialize anything on paper about, I mean, the field is, 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 that's a strange situation if it's truly associated with a school, right? I mean, it's like, in light of other discussions we've had in the past, I mean, it's nice that no one wants to be the bad, the bad guy, you know, he had to keep using the field, but you can't. That's not going to be like a reliable situation for the community if they have the high school, the high school age kids hanging out, you know, baseball diamond behind the posh. It's just going to, I mean, you know, I don't know, maybe, but it seems to me it's a public relations issue or, you know, community issue, so. I, I almost prefer it was like, you know, that they just like made a straight break and said, this is not, you know, used for that, and then there's something rather than trying to memorialize it.
I'm pretty sure the high school is not using that field.
I don't know, it's a strange one.
But I'm sure there's a way we can come up with buffering the two parcels, I'm going to call them parcel, even though it's one big parcel, buffering off that back section of that ball diamond where some no direct access from that ball diamond up to...
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a similar situation with batting cages, I mean, you know, if that's, if that's being used by, you would assume, younger, uh, younger people, uh, you would assume that that would be the, the, the usage for it. I, I, again, we're, you know, we're, we're batting our, our heads against the wall here by saying, you know, there's not going to be kids around, and that's, that's what we, we, we've always tried to avoid, so. I, I think we need to take a really hard look at, at that back half, and the usage of that in conjunction with the usage of common.
And there isn't, it doesn't look like there's broad access to Bowes.
Yeah, but the other, yes, but it's a, they're the curb cut on Bowes Road, they're just driving the outfield, basically.
But, I mean, all of this is one property, right? And you just have the goodness of this heart saying, well, you can keep using the ball field, which is really nice, but it's kind of...
That generosity causes problems.
Yeah, yeah, problems, so exactly, it's almost like, just, just take it out.
Can't use it.
Yeah, I mean, because it's his property, so.
Right.
I don't know.
I mean, as a property owner here in town too, it's, if somebody wants to use part of my property for something else, I'm not going to say no. You know, I mean, I understand where they're coming from, they're trying to be...
It's the usage though, it's not, it's not the usage of the property, it's the usage by, by who, and doing what.
Right.
I mean, that's the, you know...
Well, I think everybody knows, it's really nice that they want to continue to use that way, but it's also...
Absolutely. Is, is there a stipulation that people under twenty-one cannot be on property?
They can't enter the facility.
I don't think being on the property is an issue, I think we can go into the actual facility itself, but...
Yeah, the statute's the facility.
Okay, okay, so, I mean, it could conceivably still be used for its existing recreational purposes, again, whether or not you would want that, whether or not the applicant would want that. I don't know, I guess in, in pointing this out, um, it's something, you know, I'm thinking more like, if, if you would want that ball diamond to be able to be used, you know, in the future, then let's figure out a way to make that happen. Because right now, like you said, it's his property, and you can do whatever you want with it, subject to zoning, obviously, but, you know, that's not some, that's not a thing that's guaranteed to, to be able to continue, and maybe that's okay. But, again, for the interest of kind of having a fully formed discussion, I think we're pointing out that...
Could they separate the two properties?
Yeah, it could be it.
It'd be in that, that kind of...
Yeah, and there's a hundred there, yeah, and there's probably a hundred and some feet between that, that training, that pole yard, did you mention Marty, and, uh, the main?
Yeah, I was looking at, I zoomed up on this, uh, on that lot.
Chili heat or something?
Yeah, you could very easily split that.
And you'd have access off of Bowes Road, between both.
Just to, yeah.
Right, so both lots then would have frontage in terms of, um, creating legal parcels, now the other, other thing that would complicate it is that, um, so you, you know, for someone to really be able to use that property, you probably have to drive through the main street property and park back by the building to be able to access the ball back.
I was thinking the back property, just access off of Bowes, and the front property, access off Main.
Right, building, yeah, I mean, they're all too awful.
Yeah, but I think, I, but what I'm saying is practically speaking, if people want to go, you know, practice baseball, they're coming in a park, they're going to pull in through Main Street probably, and then, you know, park over there by the building.
But then, if you put a, if you put a structure...
So you could fence it or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, or that could be an issue too.
Yeah.
Sure, these...
You know, just, yeah, and put ones across, just to try to break it off. Because I don't want to see, I don't want to see a piece of property like this not being used, and I understand, uh, if it's a school, and they're condoning it, well, then that's shame on them, I would think.
School educated.
Yeah. If it's individuals running the field to, like they do at the diamond by the fairgrounds, so they rent time to play games, you know?
But I think our, my, my point, and I think probably Colin's point is, is that, again, you have kids around the marijuana establishment, and I, I, you know, no sense missing words, that, that's, that's corrupt, not, not, you know, the use of, I mean, I, and if you're condoning it, then you're saying it's okay. So, we'll have to discuss that, I guess.
I was going to lean on you guys to make that, this, so if I could, can I speak?
Yes, Brian.
I was like, I had the same thing, I, again, I, I don't know what information I got was correct or incorrect, but I just heard they were telling me that, you know, a school rents that field out, um, and the landlord doesn't really charge them, and I said, you know, at that school, I would, I would probably do the same exact thing, but then my thought was, I don't know how everyone's going to feel about a adult use marijuana facility, and then there's kids coming there, and then I was like, I'm going to lean on you guys. Uh, my thought was, you know, I would love to be, you know, if I'm going to have a business there, be part of that community, I would love to help any way I could, but then my thought in the back of my head was, is it just, you know, you're, you have an adult use marijuana store here, and there's a bunch of high school kids coming, so that was where I was going to leave it up to you guys, and whatever you guys kind of wanted me to do there, you guys will be all, not, you know, I mean, I would lose take your opinions, um, but if the coach came to me and said, hey, can I use your field, I'm probably not going to say no. Right? Would you want me to say no?
I guess it comes down, it comes down to what you could do to, what you guys are talking about, split them.
The balance, I like that, but then again, I also thought, you know what, there's one right across the street, Kitty Corner, there's one right next door to that, it looks like next to Burger King, might have come up, you know, so there's, it's not like, you know, they're not there, and they don't know they're there anyways, but I, but I, this is like sharing the parking lot, you know?
Right.
And that, and that's the only, I was going to lean on you guys, or a, whatever way you guys want me to go. Andrew, if I may interject, um, there's also a possibility that there's a concern with younger gentlemen or women using that baseball diamond back there, that we may be able to throw maybe a six or eight inch chain link fence, um, across the property, until further notice, until Brian's partners can come up with something else for that piece of property in the back. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think that's what we're, we're, I was talking without speaking into the mic earlier, like, um, you know, so Marty's talking about splitting the, splitting the property of a physical barrier of some sorts, that the field can still be used and not be perceived to be in the, in the back parking lot of a, of an adult use marijuana establishment. If there's something that can be memorialized, and was like a, you know, a design, a, a plan that got reviewed and everyone was happy about, then it'd be like a really nice notion as far as, you know, not coming in, being chopped up, that plowed under the baseball diamond. Um, so it's like really nice, but, um, but if it's just going to be a short-term solution, and you're eventually going to turn it into a grow area anyway or something, because it's your property, then it just sort of depends on what your long-term vision is for that parcel as well. You know, if it's, if it's only going to be, you know, a baseball diamond for another three years, well, then maybe it's just worth everyone's trouble to just, you know, make a clean break, but if it's, if you don't really want to use that property, and you're happy to let them use it as a community diamond for, you know, a, a long time, then let's try to come to an approved plan that separates the two facilities.
Well, I, I look at it too as, um, somewhat similar to putting a buffer up that we've done in other areas, where we've buffered, uh, things with trees or whatever, you know, we did it just now for the, uh, repair shop, we have put up a wood fence. Very similar circumstances. I, I, I'm just concerned that we're, we're, we're encouraging...
Well, I think it really comes down to, to is if the school is really renting and using the space, now that's a different thing than just like a, a, a youth baseball diamond that's a community thing.
Yes.
If it's like a school, then we're really, like, now we're in this, you know, we can't say one place is, you know, associated with a school, and interpret another place as not a school, one that...
Right, right. Let's, let's go on, and then we'll come back to this as a discussion. We also need to have, um, some, uh, time for a public input, if anybody has questions, either, um, on Zoom call or not, so we'll, uh, we'll do that after we get through the standards here.
Okay, so that was the first standard. So second standard, be safe, convenient, uncongestion, and loaded by other pedestrians and circulation, shall be provided for ingress and egress points anywhere in the site. If I have streets and other circulation routes, shall be designed to promote safe and efficient traffic operations within the site and at the ingress and egress points. Uh, they are proposing to use an, use an existing curb cut on Main Street. Um, we know also here that there is that curb cut off of Bowes Road, um, so, you know, that's something that, you know, again, pending how we deal with the, the, the ball field, we'll have to deal with that curb as well, we wouldn't want...